Good evening. I now call the Winton Woods Board of Education Regular Meeting to order at 6:30 PM on Monday, March 21, 2016. I would like to ask, since we have a full house, if everyone would please turn their electronic devices to silent or vibrate, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kuhn.
Here.
Mrs. Radliss.
Here.
Mr. Burdy.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Present.
The first item on our agenda this evening is our District Honors, Recognitions, and Awards. Mr. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Everyone knows that at Winton Woods, we are very proud of our artistic talent. Our kids are very artistic in a variety of ways, and I'm sure, parents, you know more about the artistic views that they have, more than we'll ever know. So, tonight, I'd like to recognize Yakira Israel, the superintendent's selection for art. Is she here tonight? Oh, she's gotta be here. Okay. So, I'll hold up her art piece. When they give you this job to go through the schools and select art, that is the most difficult job of all, because everybody's art is just incredible, and so, we'll recognize her, and that will be in a special frame, and it will stay in our district until she graduates several years from now. All right. The principal selection is Tiana Allen.
My hand.
Yes. That took some time. So, every art piece means something. So, Tiana, you want to say something about your piece? The art, the work?
Um, well, like, it took me about a thousand years to do it. And it was hard to concentrate, but like, I still concentrated, even though I messed up a little bit, maybe a lot a little bit, but like, I still did it, and I'm proud that I did it.
All right, fantastic. And the honorable mention awards go to Kiana Dean, Kiana, is Kiana here? And Alejandro Hernandez. Okay, can you hold? Yes. Where, where, where? Come on up. Want to say something about the piece?
Good job.
Well, it was quite hard to do it. It took a lot of time, and I'm glad I took all the time to make my art piece, and I'm very proud of it.
And so are we. Yes. Think I saw that guy in my backyard the other day. All right. Moving on to the Character Key Award. Kiwanis Representative. And for those that are new to the award process, tell a little bit about why you guys do it and what it represents.
Well, I'm a former teacher in the Winton Woods School District, and I'm just super thrilled to be here tonight to hand out these awards. Joining Kiwanis was an extension of my life work, and we believe that communities don't achieve their full potential unless the students do, so that's why we are here.
All right. Our first recipient, the term is resourcefulness, and is Andora Roberts from Primary North here tonight. Go with her. You gotta come with her, Mom. All right.
The Kiwanis Character Key Award is being presented to Andora Roberts of Winton Woods Primary North School in special recognition of her outstanding character trait of resourcefulness. Within the character of an individual lies the welfare of the nation. It is character that enables the individual to survive, to endure, and to transcend the negative. Your values reflect your commitment to be a student of good character to your peers, your teachers, your parents, and your community. Andora, I would like to present this to you, and I want to also say that there is a little monetary award that goes along with this.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We have to read a little bit about her. She'll stand right there. Turn to the puppet, turn to the crowd. Andora Roberts, although a mere second grader, already displays great resourcefulness. She consistently thinks outside of the box and enjoys being challenged. Day to day, she's presented with new academic material and topics, and she approaches the learning with confidence and with full effort. She works hard, never gives up, and even when she may fail, she tries again. Andora's a natural problem solver. She solves academic problems such as math, word problems, or critical thinking questions with ease and creativity. When prompted to think of another way to solve something, she is always able to come up with an alternative and does well explaining her thinking. Besides being able to solve academic-based problems, she solves daily, day-to-day problems. One of the many examples, the chair pocket, fabric folder, book holder. Everybody has one of those at home, right? On the back of her chair ripped, on the back of her chair, the chair ripped, and she never complained or asked what to do about it. Instead, I noticed she took it upon herself to problem-solve. Put the folders inside her desk and proper bind her underneath her chair on the metal bars that form it as though it were a shelf. Andora has a very sharp mindset. She independently thinks of ways to make things work. This is an excellent trait to possess, and I have no doubt that she will continue to grow to be a successful, innovative, self-sufficient adult, and this is from her teacher, Nicole Sutherland, Andora Roberts. Our next recipient, Student of the Month, Gold Star, Kiwanis, Winton Woods High School, Molly Ah.
This Achievement Award is being presented to Molly Ah in special recognition of her selection as Gold Star Kiwanis Student of the Month of Winton Woods High School for March for her outstanding academic achievement, enthusiasm, and commitment to service in the community and her school district. And as with the other award, this one also comes with a monetary award. Congratulations.
Okay, here's a little bit about Molly. She deserves a Student of the Month Award for many reasons. Molly has only been in the United States for a few years, and English is not her native language. Many students in her same positions are failing in their classes because it takes them too long to get assignments done due to the unfamiliarity with English. This is not Molly's case. Molly's father tells me she begins her homework in the afternoon and continues working through the night. That demonstrates a dedication and perseverance that is rarely found in a student her age. Molly attends after-school tutoring in the library nearly every day it is available. Many of Molly's hard work has paid, all of Molly's hard work has paid off, as well as As and Bs for the entire year, and she has earned these impressive grades while maintaining a positive attitude and sweet disposition. Her teachers say Molly is a pleasure to have in class, always taking her studies very seriously. Molly Ah is an intelligent, hard-working young lady who has overcome huge obstacles to achieve success. She is a model for other students at Winton Woods High School. Brad Dash, counselor. Our next recipient, Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, Nicholas Barrett. Junior Nicholas Barrett was named Winton Woods City Schools' Skyline Student Athlete of the Month for March. Barrett, who was on the school swim team, and we don't have a pool, and varsity baseball team, has an overall graded weighted GPA of 4.2 and is ranked 3 out of 317 in his class. Bravo for that. Nicholas is an honored student in the classroom and a MVP on the swimming, in the swimming pool, said Winton Woods High School Athletic Director David Lumpkin. He is a consummate student athlete at Winton Woods High School. To be nominated for the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, students must maintain an academic standard of 3.0 or above in the previous quarter, show respect for coaches, teammates, officials, teachers, other students, and family, show enthusiasm and positive attitude, display commitment to practice games and personal skill development, demonstrate honesty in playing by the rules, have high moral character. The Skyline Student Athlete of the Month is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline, a business partner of Winton Woods City Schools. Student athletes honor receive a $20 Skyline gift card. Mr. Nicholas Barrett.
I put in a lot of time and effort to be successful in both athletics and academics, so I really appreciate the recognition tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we have great students, but we also recognize our incredible teachers. So, the Winton Woods Skyline Teacher of the Month for March is Ms. Melissa Webb. Ms. Webb? I'll read about her anyway. Hard work and passionate teaching is what Melissa Webb, 4th grade teacher, Arts and Social Studies, brings every day to her classroom at Winton Woods Elementary School, and it's what has led to Webb being chosen as the March Skyline Teacher of the Month for Winton Woods City Schools. Ms. Webb exudes positive energy and leads by example, said Winton Woods Elementary School Principal Adrienne Martin. She is an engaging teacher who does a great job of collaborating with her peers and providing her students with great lessons. Webb is a team leader at Winton Woods Elementary and serves as an active member of the building leadership team. To be nominated for the Skyline Teacher of the Month, teachers must demonstrate excellence in the classroom by using instructional practices that support higher academic achievement, motivation by encouraging and motivating students to surpass their expectations both academically and socially, leadership by having a positive attitude with students, parents, colleagues, and community, creativity and imagination by demonstrating creativity in teaching in a way that inspires students to learn, dedication by showing excellent attendance, punctuality, and overall dependability, and finally, communication by communicating effectively to their classroom parents, colleagues, and beyond. The Skyline Teacher of the Month is sponsored by Forest Park Skyline, a business partner of Winton Woods City Schools, and when you see her, please let Ms. Webb know that we appreciate her very much. Okay. Mr. Anthony?
I can't wait to see how you pronounce it.
Clanshaw. Yeah, what can I say? You know, Hooked on Phonics was back in the day, but I remember the words.
No, Clanker or Clanshaw?
No, sir, not this time.
Not even my favorite Clankety Clank.
So, let me read about, let me read about this, this great guy. All right. So, he's been sponsoring this writing endorsement, and it's called Head Cases. And five students of the Head Cases, a student writing group led by Mr. Clanshaw, were honored with three Silver Key Awards for the top 10% of entrance and six honorable mentions for the top 15% of entrance in the writing portion of the 2016 Scholastic Art and Writing Competition. The winners in their prize awardings were Alex Crest, 10th grade, honorable mentions. You have to listen to some of these titles, some of these creative works. Flash Fiction for The Demise of Ryan Trees and Two Front Teeth. Connor Mittelman, 11th grade, Silver Key Poetry for A New Thing, an honorable mention. Flash Fiction for 90% Rock in a Bed of Mud and Poetry Happiness in a Compact Synthetic Guise. Eden, you'll read these someday, trust me. Eden Daniel, 12th grade, Silver Key Flash Fiction for The Talesman, an honorable mention. Poetry for the Odeon in Sea. Kate Ingram, 9th grade, Silver Key Poetry for Sparkling. Rhoda Numara, 8th grade, honorable mention for Passive Wishes. Additional members of the Head Cases who were entered into the competition are Jordan Denny, Academy of Global Studies, 12th grade, who entered a novel excerpt. The results from that portion of the contest will not be released until April, so it's gonna be awesome. You feel it? You feel the energy, Jordan? I feel it too. All right, okay. Travis East, 11th grade, and Monique Wallace, 8th grade. The Board of Education congratulates the students on their creativity and awards. The Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Program is the nation's longest-running, largest, most prestigious recognition program for creative teens. Over the past 90 years, the awards have recognized and encouraged artists and writers such as Sylvia Plath, Andy Warhol, Truman Capote, Robert Redford, Tom Oltenas, Zack Poison, among countless others. Mr. Clanshaw.
Although I think it's worth, because really, I'm not the one that did the work on this, so even though we only have three of them here, Connor, Jordan, Kate, well, Kate's already standing, but Connor and Jordan, take a moment and stand up. Come on up here. I could say everything on the face of the planet about, you know, the work that they put in, but it doesn't really do justice to, you know, the work itself, which, by the way, we put out our book every year. It'll be coming out this year, right about the beginning of May, just mentioning. Very easy to get ahold of, and copies are only $5. Wink, wink, nudge, nudge. Did any of you want to say something about what you've done?
I mean, is there anything you want to ask? Or do you, do I just want to, do I just want to say something?
Go from here, Jordan. Right here.
Well, I started writing, well, I had the idea of writing in 7th grade. It was actually an assignment in middle school when one of my teachers told me to write a letter to one of our favorite authors, and at the time, my favorite author was Terry Brooks. I was like into reading his entire series of the Shinarah series, and I loved it. I was amazed by it. His writing was beautiful, and I was just so inspired by it, and everything that I wanted to do from then on after, after I wrote that letter, I wanted to, you know, write for him, and it wasn't only until like two months later that I actually got a letter back from him. I don't remember exactly what it said, but basically what it said was, "I love that you're reading my works. Just keep up the great work, and I hope to keep in touch with you soon." Basically, the main idea behind my work, I've started writing it in 8th grade, and it's nearing culmination because I'm just about finished writing it. I had to get it edited and hopefully get it published, but by then, it should be just about finished by the end of the year. And the main story about it, it's how I've always envisioned my world in fantasy, and a lot of my writing has actually come from Terry Brooks, Tolkien, R.A. Salvatore, a whole bunch of other authors that I've read from other books. This is gonna be one in a trilogy, so I hope, I can't, can't wait to show it to you all.
You may not know this, but Jordan is my son. I just, I just wanted to let you know that, yeah, so I just wanted to let you know, in case you were wondering. All right, bravo. Thank you. Okay. How many of you attended the Arts Fair? The most incredible exhibition of talented musicians and artists that I have seen for many, many years. All of that talent couldn't be created without the talent of the incredible teachers to lead that charge. So, I remember the first day we had the conversation, I was surrounded by artists in this room, and we talked about a vision of how we could really make this a very special event, and they looked at the superintendent and they're like, they smiled in my face, but I'm sure something else was said behind my back. But you know what? They surpassed anything that I could have ever imagined. That was year one, last year. Year two, this year, this movement was like clockwork, and so, I'd like to personally thank you for your expressive talent, your passion for students, your love for the arts, and that you are part of our Winton Woods family. So, I'm gonna read a little bit about you and how you did it, and then, your spokesperson, I see you right there, Ms. Becky Young, will come and tell how all of this came together. The Board of Education would like to recognize the following staff who worked diligently to make this second annual district-wide event a huge success. Board members, Ms. Paula Kuhn, Danny Ashbrook, Lois Bell, Matthew Ghul, Carol Becky Young, Sherri Content, Karina Denny, Jordan Hable, Terry Holden, Tim Henninger, Cindy Hudak, Katie Lambier, Eric Martin. Wait a minute, what did, what did Mr. Martin do? Did he do something? All right, I'm just checking. I've been knowing Mr. Martin many years, no artistic talent, none. Okay. All right. Ms. Catherine Mahalo, Beth Miller, Felipe Morales, Linda Schultz, Aaron Schmitz, Mike Schultz, Megan Smarta, Sharon Smith, Mary Grace Spalding, John Thacker, Ms. Megan Weaver, Ms. Amanda Westwood, and Mr. Joe Whately. So, come on up, the whole team. Mr. Martin, they say you helped, so come on, come on up. Come on up.
Okay, so to answer Mr. Smith's question, in order to pull this off, it's a team of people, there are people behind the scenes besides us. So, Mr. Martin was a person who knew exactly what was needed. He'd show up at my door and he'd say, "Are the boards coming?" And I'd say, "Yes." Say, "Well, where should we put them?" "Let's put them here." "Do you need security?" "Yes." Okay, so he was always there to help facilitate and make it so easy. Like, behind the scenes, Mrs. Schultz, she helped fill out the paperwork. Cindy Hudak, who did, did the, the lights in the auditorium, and then the performing arts boosters, who were there to help get their word out and to support us. And of course, Mr. Smith, whose vision it was, yeah, you're right, Mr. Smith, that first year, we were like, oh my goodness. But then, it, it just all came together. The amazing art teachers and music teachers that we have in this school are unsurpassed in our district, are unsurpassed. There's so much talent, the support from the Board of Education, from our principals, from our superintendent, the performing arts boosters, and then, most of all, our amazing kids. It is just such a treat to teach and nourish our artists in our district. We are the best, and it's a blessing to be here.
A final award is the Community Spirit Award, and this goes to the family that understands the words sacrifice, generosity, and dedication. So, these are just a few words to describe the continued involvement of Kim and Matt Sherman. Are they here tonight? Come up. The Shermans have been part of this experience for many, many years. I think it started with their, when their youngest son was an athlete in 2012. Yes? When you, when you give your speech, you tell the, because you're the spokesperson now. Okay, all right. Athletic Director David Lumpkin said, "The Community Spirit Award is a small acknowledgment compared to the sacrifices of Matt and Kim Sherman as they give back to student athletes and the community of Winton Woods City Schools. Even after graduating two children from Winton Woods High School, Matt and Kim continue to provide much-needed support to the athletic department. As president of the Winton Woods Athletic Boosters, Kim leads several fundraising events sponsored by boosters. All of the money raised goes towards all athletic teams at Winton Woods. There's a saying, 'If you want something done, ask a busy person. They'll make sure it happens.'" This is definitely true of Kim and Matt. In addition to quarterly booster meetings, the list of their involvement to help our student athletes is amazing. They run fall, winter, and spring concessions, organize the annual golf outing, coordinate warrior card sale, organize Ultimate Warrior Women Day with Coach Andre Parker, take care of Athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremonies and dinner, sell spirit wear, coordinate popcorn sales, help with football dinners. We're grateful for the many years that Mr. and Mrs. Sherman have supported Winton Woods student athletes and our athletic staff, and we applaud their generosity and their service to our district and our community. This month, we are pleased to present the March Community Spirit Award to Kim and Matt Sherman, and this is not on here, but I'm gonna read, I'm just going to improvise. They've agreed that they'll do this for the next 20 years. So, Kim and Matt Sherman. Bravo.
I'm, I'm exhausted listening to that. All the stuff I've done. It started back when the kids were at Lakeside, or we call it South, PTA there, and went up to the high school and just, I liked, I liked the coaches, I liked the staff. It's, it's hard, and I ask the parents who are here, "You have to help. We need help." I want to thank Karen Barrowick and her kids have, she says, "One more kid, one more year, get yours out." I wanted to, Elise Bigg, I just can't say enough about you. You're my- You're my right hand, you're always there if I need you. And Candy Hein, who's not here, and then Tina Stewart over there. Their kids have gone, along with mine, and five years later, we're still here, and I can't do without you. And there's some other moms that aren't here, but it's just, it's great, I love Witten Woods, I just, we just need help. Thanks.
Madam President? That's all.
Thank you Superintendent Smith, and congratulations again to all of our students honored this evening, and to our wonderful teachers, and we'll now take a five-minute recess. We will now resume our regular board meeting, and we'll now move into comments from our public. And because the Board desires to hear the viewpoints of citizens and also recognizes the need to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner, time at all regular meetings is offered for citizens to be heard. I do want to remind everyone that the time limit is three minutes. And we will move right into the first one here, Maria Walther Willard.
Hi, thank you so much for allowing this time for concerns to be explained and presented to you and being heard. Listening here to the awards that we're presenting today, I think that I urge you to perhaps take stock in Andorra, results with less was her award, because she was able to figure out how to repair something that was broken down. I also, the reason I'm saying that is because I'm very distraught at the results of the report card. The five Fs that I saw in the report card tells me that whatever we're doing is not working, so we need to think outside the box, like this little young girl did. I take this personal, because, and we all should, because this report card, I think it presents the five Fs given to the Board of Education, given to the superintendent, given to the administration, given to the teachers, given to the students, given to the parents, given to the three communities, and all those three communities that have public elected officials. And I think that we have to think outside the box to make this work. I was dismayed to see that one of the Fs was for the gifted, in which there is a Ohio Revised Code 3302, period 03, that demands that there is a program in place for the gifted. There are monies that are allocated for that. Perhaps we need some kind of an audit to figure out why this is not happening. These are very disheartening circumstances for our school system. I had to look of all the different areas in Hamilton County to find out Logland was the only one that had seven Fs. So, we got to get it together, build this barn together, raise this barn together. I've tried for five years to get some kind of information and an exchange with the board, and it has not happened. I had been going to all the meetings quarterly that it was given as a public meetings to Forest Park. I keep asking for the same thing. The new board members don't have that background, because they were not present when I had came forth, have come forth to ask for that. But the other members that were here, I know that, I asked Kim Byrne several times, because she was the one that had the meetings for Forest Park, "Please, talk to all three communities. You may have excellent communication skills with the parents, but I think that you need to also branch out to taxpayers and also representative of the government of all the three districts." Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Willard?
I'm John Willard, I live in Green Hills. First, I was very refreshing to see all these young, talented people up here, and quite frankly, if the entire student body were the same as them, how would you be standing here? What really concerns me, not just the report card, but the designation that's challenged by the Board of Education, that's the State Department of Board of Education. We're of only 39 schools in the district, or in the state, that have that designation. Now, why is that important? Less than a month ago, the Ohio State Legislature changed the law as far as designation of academics' distress. Less than a month. I warned you about a year, when I say you, the older board members, maybe remember, a year and a half ago, but you have about two or three years to get your act together. And I was just guessing. Lo and behold, last month, they changed the statute, and now, this is the way it reads, in part. This is Section 3302.10. Grade F for three consecutive years can require an academic distress commission to be appointed for a district. It's mandatory. You have two Fs now, last year and the year before. You're looking at a third F down the road. When that happens, where I'm reading the statute now, it's almost automatic. And when you get an academic distress commission, there'll be some local people on it, but not totally. There'll be some people from the state and citizens. The board will become superfluous. Now, the good news, you won't have to run for election again for maybe 10 or 15 years, until the board collapses, until the academic commission is dissolved. But this is something you've got to look at. I suggest very strongly you check with your outside attorney and take with you a representative from the administration, and I suggest very strongly Courtney Wilson. She's an attorney, and have a meeting as a board with your outside attorney to review your legal options now, not 10 months from now, but now, in light of your academic standing, because your future is at stake as a board. Not me, I'm not saying it, I like to see you stick around and try to get your act together. But I'm just saying, right now, it looks, it appears, from where I read the statute as recently enacted, you've got about one year, and that's it. So, if you think you might have a reason to do something, you got it. And I think you're going to have to scrap the old, I used to call the Pentagon doctrine of non-interference with the administration. It obviously isn't working. Now, Mr. Smith, your superintendent, is a very intelligent man, I think he's sincere. But it's obvious from the grades we're getting, that the team he has chosen to assist him in the administration is not getting the job done, for whatever reason. I'm not an administrator, but the grades show it. We can't blame the test for it. That test was given to every district in the state, and you can't say, "Well, there's flaws in it." Everything made by man has a flaw in it. But other schools took the same test and came out with As and Bs. So, we just don't blame the test. If we need someone to blame, it's very easy, just go home and look in the mirror, because that's where the blame is.
You have about 30 seconds. Thank you, Mr. Willard. Deputy Chief Jermaine Hill, from the City of Forest Park, Fire Department.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So, since I'm friends with Superintendent Smith, and he makes me giddy and gets me really energetic, I have to make sure that I bring my notes, because I'll forget something. That's just the energy that you give to me. So, today, I'm here to talk about We Thrive. I didn't know if everyone on the board knew, but Forest Park is now a We Thrive community. We passed a resolution, and We Thrive is through Hamilton County Public Health. We have a group here in Forest Park that's responsible, or taking charge of trying to create programs, health initiatives that'll help the community be safer, healthier, more active. Our group, we have individuals that live in Forest Park, work in Forest Park, go to Forest Park, and we're trying to create a culture of health, safety, and vitality through environment and policy. Through We Thrive, they have different foci, and they call them pathways. The ones that, the one that we chose was community, I'm sorry, was chronic health, because through chronic health, we were able to get an epidemiologist to study and survey Forest Park, to see where our needs were the most. Okay? We also chose it because it tackled a bunch of issues that are prevalent at Forest Park as far as diabetes, obesity, lack of access to healthy foods and the like, and lack of physical activity. So, our highlight so far, we just start, we just formed our group like towards the end of 2014, 2015, we were able to, we were awarded a grant through Interact for Health, which allows us to put money towards active living. Through that grant, we're trying to focus on walking paths and bike trails and safe pathways for schools. Let's see, we want to make the environment more conducive and more inviting for families to come out. Just from talking to residents and some of our committee members, they said that they would like to be out and walk more, but they were afraid. They said the lighting was bad. My fire chief Alfie Jones, he walks every morning, God bless him, at 5:00 in the morning in the dark, and he's taken a couple of spills because the pavement wasn't level. So, those are some of the things that we're looking to take care of in Forest Park. There's a couple of parks that need upkeep, so we're gonna hopefully put some money towards that as well. What we're looking for from hopefully the school board and the community that's watching are active change agents. We're looking for people with ideas, we're looking for more committee members, we're looking for people that want to make a difference and make a positive impact on Forest Park. So, that's why I'm here. If you know anybody, if it's nobody from the board, if you just know someone that's, you know, we love retired people, because they can put that energy towards it. We've actually had some high school students sit in on meetings, you know, just to give us different perspectives. It doesn't matter how old, doesn't matter what your skill level is, we can use you. Please, 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 come on out, come see us. We have our meetings the last Wednesday of the month, the school board, I gave you guys, the community health assessment, and also an overview of the chronic disease pathways. I left some on the table here, and I also left my business card, my phone number if you're watching, 513-595-5291. I'm here for any questions that you may have. Otherwise, I thank you, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys, and that's all I have.
Thank you for coming. What time are those meetings?
From 5:00 to 7:00. I'm sorry, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., but again, that's fluid, because sometimes, you know, we have to adapt to people's work schedule.
But it is always the last Wednesday of the month?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And is it held at the city building?
Firehouse.
Firehouse, okay.
Yes. And sometimes, we have snacks. Food works.
Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, next we have Stephanie, is it Brigons?
Brigons. Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of my bus driver, Felicia Sangare. It appears there was an isolated incident on her bus, and due to that fact, she's been removed from her bus. Since her removal, I've had nothing but pure trauma with my child, being on the bus. He's been attacked, he's been coming home abused, beat up, ever since she's been removed from the route. He doesn't want to go to school. I've addressed the bus company, I've addressed the school, I've addressed the driver, the current driver, and they told me to have my child sit at the front of the bus. They couldn't watch the back of the bus. They couldn't watch him. That's unacceptable. Whatever the incident she had was one incident. I've had her as a driver for two or three years now. My kids have been perfectly fine, they're happy to go to school, she's on time. If it's Halloween, she's giving out candy, the kids are motivated, they're happy. Now, my son has no motivation. I have photographs of him where he's been abused, nothing has been done about it. As long as he was driving, he felt comfortable, he could sit wherever he wanted to sit on the bus, there was no issues. Now, he's just being bullied. I would really like for her to come back on that route. That was one isolated incident that she had, I feel like that can be worked with. Put a monitor on her bus, or someone else to assist her. She's a great driver. I need my driver back so that my son can feel comfortable. I don't want to drive him to school every day. It's between me and my son, which is actually an assistant coach at Witten Woods High School, Stephon Brigons, we have to go between trying to get him to school. He doesn't even want to get on the bus. That's an issue now. When she was there, no problems. Even with my other daughter, with my daughter, she drove her, no problems. Now, I have different drivers, they may come at one time, they may come at another time. She was very accurate. I could be at the corner, I knew they were coming. I could put him on the bus, I knew he was fine. Now, every day, I'm calling Primary South, I'm calling Transportation, I'm calling someone, trying to get someone to listen to me. And through speaking to the principal at Primary South, she's told me she's not here to speak for me, so it may be hearsay, but I'm not the only parent that's having an issue with that bus. So, something needs to be addressed, so that my baby can feel comfortable with going to school. He loves school, but now, it's an issue with transportation. I have five children, one is a graduate from Witten Woods High School, the other one is in the gifted program, she's been tested, she's gifted. I have my children, they're A/B honor roll all school year. So, I'd like to keep having them have a positive effect in school and not let this one issue be a problem with him. I feel like she can just be reprimanded. It was one isolated incident, she hasn't had any since she's been there. Bring her back, I really need her back, so that my son can continue to thrive and have a good school year, so he can feel comfortable to sit wherever he wants to sit on the bus and feel safe, and feel happy. When he gets on the bus and gets off, he's excited. Now, it's a whole different story. So, I'm trying to see what we can do to get a good driver back. You don't find very many people that are positive in your children's lives. She's a positive driver. The other parents that were here, the other teachers that were here, Ms. Kim, she's worked with my son, she's excellent. You don't find very many people in the community that are willing to work with your kids and put forth a positive effort. And I've just seen a lot of faces here this evening, and I've recognized those faces. I've been on the football banquets, I've prepared meals for the football team, so I'd just like someone to hear me and try and help my baby so that he can continue to thrive, she can continue to thrive and help the other children. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Charles Robinson?
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Robinson. I drove a school bus for 35 years for Hamilton City. Already know about how buses go and how the kids are. She drove my, one of my grandkids last year, she got another one riding now, and he asked me this morning, he said, "When does my other bus driver come back?" I said, "I don't know. Right now, she's not driving." She is a good bus driver. When I first met her, she pulled up, introduced herself to me, and she said, "I'm having a little problem right now." And then, first I said, "Listen, I know, because I did it for 35 years for Hamilton." And I would love for her to come back, because I know she's a good bus driver, because I just by spot good bus driver and know them, because I was around a lot of them that come and a lot of them left. So, I would love for her to come back, because I miss her. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, you know, that are two that ride their bus right there. And I'm right there, and the one that got the cap on actually this morning, "Where's my bus driver?" I said, "Well, hopefully she'll be back, because they miss her."
Thank you, sir. Felicia Sangare?
Hi, thank y'all. My name is Felicia Sangare. I was a bus driver...
Sorry for the mispronunciation.
No problem, everybody do it, it's fine, no problem. I was a bus driver for Witten Woods. I was there for like, maybe two and a half, three years, maybe. I got really close with a lot of students, a lot of them, they're my babies. I love my babies. And not only the students I drive, the walkers, even one of the writers, he in high school, there's no way I should know him, but by me taking trips and stuff, I get to know all my students. And when I take trips, they're my babies. I don't care if you on here for a second or not, you my baby. I don't jeopardize my students. And in the paper that I sign for the phone usage or whatever, okay, I signed it in August, I go to school, I'm in school for criminal justice, I'm a single parent, I do a lot. So, I know not to drive and use my phone, but the passenger on it, "Okay, it might have slipped my mind, I'm sorry." It did, it might have did, it's, I'm sorry about that. The child got hurt, supposedly on my bus, while I was on the phone with another driver, a two-minute phone conversation. I had a phone records and everything. I got fired because the child got hurt on my bus, but I never knew the child was special needs. I never knew the child was special, he drove, rode my bus all year. I never knew this child, I knew he gave me more problems than usual, students, but I never knew he was special needs until the incident happened and they took him off my bus the very next day. The very next day, they took him off my bus. So, onto that, they said I was using the phone, they got video footage, okay, I understand that, where, but it was never driving, it was sitting at the school, and the meeting that we... And the meeting that we had with Courtney Wilson, it was two, um, union reps. And I said, "In that meeting, in front of Christie with Christie." Okay, y'all might have seen me doing something on my phone, but y'all don't know what it was. You, you seen me pushing, but, but you don't know what it was. And I asked my boss, sitting in front of Courtney and the two union reps, "Did you or did you not say I can listen to my Pandora?" Because my radio went down. My kids on my bus, my kids, we have relationship, I barely write my kids up because I handled a situation. I don't have to write my students up, never, really, unless it's a major incident. Other than that, I handle the situation. And my radio went out. Well, I know Pandora kids by "Make My Babies Happy," and they ride home, we sing together riding home. I mean, it, so my radio went down, she told me I can use my Pandora. So, when I asked her that in the meeting, and she admitted to it. So I'm just so confused, like, in the same day that the incident took place, I was on the phone with the outfits explaining the situation while my kids was loading. So when I put it in the letter, I'm confused. Like, I'm confused because I was talking to another driver about an incident that happened that morning, where two students was ready to fight, and I kind of figured it was going to roll over to the P. M. bus, because I don't, I drive eight routes. I don't know, I know all my students' faces, I can't tell you their names. It's, it's so many of them. But I know their faces, so I'm on the phone with her, and I'm trying to point the students out, but a fi, a incident happened. So I was trying to avoid an emergency incident that was going to happen, but an incident happened. But it was so quiet, it was so quick, I didn't even know it happened. I didn't even know it happened, so I am presenting out with a letter that a parent, she couldn't come.
You have about ten seconds left.
She couldn't come, so I'm presenting this letter to the board, and a student that wrote me right before they fired me, I'm presenting the letter, and I never got a chance to reply to this student. And I feel awful that I can't reply to this student, because I don't even, I can't even give it to her cousin to give it back to her. So, I'm just presenting that, and I'm just asking if y'all could just consider my job, just give me my job back. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the next item on our agenda board is the approval of minutes as attached. Unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as they are written and attached.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to our treasurer's report. Mr. Seymour?
Um, yes, the financial reports for this evening, we have year-to-date revenues in the general fund of thirty-four point two million, and you may have noticed, and I even had questions about it as to why the month-to-date revenues went up, and that's because our real estate taxes, uh, advances came in during that month. So that was a good question. And then also, that would affect not only the general fund, but also the permanent improvement fund, which has real estate tax advances. Also, our total year-to-date expenditures, uh, in the general fund are at thirty point six million, and, uh, we're currently running around two to three percent under budget, so we're hoping that that holds up throughout the, the rest of the, uh, year, fiscal year. And then, uh, you finally, you have the financial activity for all the funds, and the district had a balance on February twenty-eighth of twenty point zero million, of which eighteen point seven of that million was the general fund, and the reason the general fund, uh, balance is high is because we got all our real estate tax advances for that month. Now that balance will start to spend out, but that's the financial report for the month of February.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, let the financial report for the month of February twenty sixteen be submitted to audit, and Mr. Seymour will move on to your recommendations.
And then for our, uh, investments for the month of February, we received an interest income of eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars for the month of February.
Board a motion would be in order for this one?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to approve the financial statements and the investment reports for February twenty sixteen as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Randy, back to you for seven point oh-two.
One additional item for this evening is, we, uh, rarely have to do this, but this year we will have to do this, I have to ask the board to revise their appropriations. As you know, the district received a straight A grant, and at this point, those funds were unanticipated, and now they have been awarded. We thought we were going to have to spend all of those funds this year until, uh, Dr. Holden and I attended a meeting in Columbus Friday, and it was a misprint in the, uh, O. D. E. guidelines, and we are going to get next year. But it, it's, uh, okay that I have all of the funds in there to be appropriated, because we cannot spend more than we take in, so, uh, I'm going to leave, I'm just going to leave the appropriations, because should we end up spending it all this fiscal year, then we're covered, because we would also get the revenue to cover that. So, the reason we're asked, we're adding the straight A grant for nine hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred dollars that the district curriculum department was able to write a grant and receive, there were very few recipients, we were in Columbus, and there were very few recipients that received this grant, so Wynton Woods should be proud of that. Also, we have, um, a R. U. guideline from the state auditor's office. If we have a tournament here, which we will be having, they're asking that we not run those funds through the athletic fund anymore, and that we set up a district agency account. So this is a estimated district agency count for the, uh, any, uh, Ohio High School Athletic Association tournaments that we might have, and Mr. Lumpkin sat down with, uh, Mrs. O'Connor and I, and we tried to review what that might be for this year. And then the last item is, I have to ask for an increase for the, um, public school support. Basically, that's O. eighteen, and that's basically your principals' accounts. Principals each have an account called Public School Support, in which they fundraise or they solicit donations to support their, uh, academics in the building that's usually student incentive-driven, that the general fund typically doesn't support, like, certain incentives for performance and things like that. And I know many of them have lunch with the principal and things like that. So we have all new principals this year, they are fundraising more, and we underestimated what they might do for the year, so we're asking to increase that fund so that they could spend those.
Madam President and Board, do you mind if I make a comment? Having the, the pleasure to work with Mr. Seymour is really a pleasure, uh, simply because I know that, uh, coming back with the information where the Ohio Department of Education was an era which they really never are, um, and for Mr. Seymour and also Dr. Holden to make, um, the, the gains or make the plan, even though it was the era, I think is, is noteworthy on his part. He didn't complain, he didn't make a big stew about it, he just said, "Okay, this is the deadline, they're saying here the, here are the, uh, um, legal ramifications associated with it." And they've made an era, but at the end of the day, um, not complaining and moving forward is the way we really try to do our business, so thank you very much.
Thank you Superintendent Smith and Mr. Seymour. And Board, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the revised fiscal year two thousand sixteen appropriations affecting the three, um, funds as listed by Mr. Seymour.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. And Board, is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Seymour?
I don't have a question, but I would just like to, um, clarify that the Fund four six six, the straight A fund, the nine hundred and eleven, that was for the new tech network, just so that be clear that that money is already, you know, appropriated to use for that.
Well, it's, it's, it's a specific, uh, purpose grant, and we would have to spend it as Dr. Holden wrote the grant.
Wrote the grant, right. Can't use it for anything else.
No, there's no discretion on our part, it is awarded for the purpose it was written.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any further discussion or questions?
And Fund zero one eight, um, it's just an increase of ninety-six hundred dollars to that total.
Yes, yeah. We, we had that appropriation there, but we've underestimated, uh, they're all new principals, and they all have great ideas, so. And I may be back to increase that again, that's a guess on our part.
Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Superintendent, you now have the floor for eight point zero one.
Eight point zero one, um, upcoming school events. For your consideration and also for your enjoyment, uh, there'll be several events coming up. Uh, I'd like for you to pay close attention to the upcoming school event, the kindergarten open house, six to seven-thirty on April fourteenth. Uh, that's going to be an exciting time, uh, to see new parents and new faces that'll be part of our new process, so stay tuned for that. And I'd like to mention something in the high school, the National Letter of Intent Athletic Signing for Basketball. Not only do these young people have to be athletically, uh, stew, they have to also be academically sound. Um, and then finally, April fifteenth and sixteenth, Cinderella, um, I think they, they've already said it's going to be an incredible, uh, sellout, so get your tickets early. One of the things I really would like to continue to mention every board meeting, when board members attend these events, the, the parents, the teachers, the students are absolutely excited to know that you care enough to, I know you guys have busy schedules, but coming to those events mean, mean a whole lot. So thank you for your continued support.
Thank you Superintendent Smith. We'll now move on to your recommendations, starting with nine point zero one.
Yes, Madam President and Board, the, uh, recommendation is to approve personnel schedules as presented. Schedule A, resignations and retirements. Schedule C, support staff. Schedule D, extra duty and supplemental employment. Schedule E, leaves. And finally, Schedule M, termination of classified employee.
Board a motion would be in order?
I make a motion that we accept the pres, uh, the superintendent's recommendations as submitted regarding personnel.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Board, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. We'll now move on to nine point zero two, Mr. Superintendent?
Ordinarily, Madam President and Board, we would, um, have this as a first read, uh, but we're asking that the Board, um, um, consider approving this one tonight, simply because it's regarding, uh, policy fifty-three twenty immunization. Uh, this was, uh, this revision is designed to make clear that students may be excluded from school if documentation of required immunization is not presented within fourteen days of an initial enrollment or request for such documentation. The difference of what's going on now, and, uh, I would really like to, uh, give, uh, special consideration to our H. R. Director for finding this policy, but also making some other steps. Every district has that fourteen-day deal, where students are going to be excluded, but we're doing something a little bit more student-friendly, where before that fourteen days come upon us, we're giving the parents information about a free process, a free clinic, a free opportunity, so that students won't have the, uh, they won't have to miss school. So, not only are we following the po, the policy, but we're making it student-friendly. So I'm, uh, asking that the Board consider making the recommendation tonight, uh, just because we will have students that will be close to that fourteen-day rule very, very soon.
Board a motion would be in order?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised policy, uh, fifty-three twenty, the student immunization as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded, is there any further discussions or questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Burdy?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to our Board of Education report, starting with Mr. Cleary. Good evening.
Good evening, Board. It's a very abbreviated report this evening. Highlights are, uh, I tried to give you, every month I try and give you some information maybe you didn't know, and it's information I didn't know as well. College Credit Plus and Dual Enrollment in Great Oaks, uh, Great Oaks started that back in two thousand four. Since two thousand four, there's been almost twenty-two thousand credits granted to students. I was amazed at that, um, at the total, that total value and total count. Great Oaks Report Card came out, we earned all straight As, um, roughly eighty-four percent of our students passed the assessment in their career tech program, ninety-six percent of our students graduated in four years, ninety-five percent were, uh, dual enrolled in college, in college credit classes, and roughly ninety-four percent are employed or in post-secondary education and military. I had, uh, two community members ask me, from Wynton Woods, ask me, "Why, why, why are, are some of our Wynton Woods students doing so well in the Great Oaks?" And it, it, just sitting here this evening made me think of Mr. Smith's son standing up here and talking about the novel that he wants to write, and that he has such an appetite and enthusiasm for that. And career tech creates that. If your child is interested in robotics, and you get to do robotics, and you get to write about robotics in your English class, and you get to do mathematics that are related to the robotics that you are working on, and you get to do program language in the thing that you really enjoy, your odds of being successful and engaged are far greater. I know we're trying to do that here in the district as well, at, at multiple le, levels, A. G. S. is one of those, our honors classes are some of those things, the arts. But I just kind of found it interesting that a parent had asked me that question. Something kind of, uh, fun, this is a, a first time for Great Oaks. Great Oaks is going to have a summer camp this summer for ninth and tenth graders. It'll run, um, over four days, where they'll actually be able to come in and, um, engage in what some careers might be like. Uh, careers ranging from cooking, cosmetology, sports rehab, digital arts, horse training, construction, aviation, and there's a list here. If there's any parent that's interested in that, um, call over to Great Oaks and get them signed up. I don't believe that there's any cost for it. Wynton Woods student highlights, um, the B. P. A. Regional Competition, uh, went on last month, and we've got a couple students that, uh, did very well there. Cameron Vaughn, uh, he's a computer service technician, he placed fourth, fourth in PC servicing. Warren Blake is also a computer service technician, he placed first in information technology, first in interviewing skills, and second in prepared speech that he gave. This was kind of a unique opportunity for Miranda Corbett, Miranda's in equine science, she had the opportunity to go to Washington, D. C., uh, as a representative for the Hamilton County Farm Bureau on Ag Day. Got to talk with legislators, went up with some of the administrators from the Great Oaks, that was a great opportunity for her, I know she had a great time. Some of our students recently have been placed, Jackie, um, Marler, she's dental assisting, she was placed as a floater at Dr. Polnick's, uh, practice. Carlo Ruff, health technology, uh, he's had a placement at Cedar Village as a C. N. A., or as S. T. N. A. And, uh, Jaleah Brown, dental assisting, she was a student of the month. And one of our students, one of our Wynton Woods students, uh, prepared the menu, and he was like, "I'm not sure what the, the role that you play in hospitality, in food hospitality," but he had the lead role in serving about three hundred of us at banquet. This was the menu he prepared, I just thought it was so, so interesting that the placement was the menu, uh, kind of fun, but he prepared that as well, and I don't remember what his name was. But it was, uh, it was fun, and he was acknowledged as that lead person. So congratulations, our students are doing great at the Great Oaks.
Madam President and Board, I'd like to, uh, ask Mr. Cleary one question, if that's okay. So the, alright, so people are watching on TV. And with all these great attributes that, uh, the Oaks is providing, what grade does the Oak start in?
It's, uh, juniors and seniors.
Okay.
And there's engagement, other opportunities as well, but it's mainly juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors, very good, thank you.
And a large percentage of our students are post-secondary as well. So they're engaging in getting their career certification. Their testing's a little bit different than what we do because their testing is based on this certification that they wanna earn. So if they're in construction or in plumbing or electrical, they go and they get a master's license. So that's their measure of success. So it's a little bit different, um, in, in that area. Thank you Board.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. We'll now move into the legislative report. And I wanted to bring to your attention fellow colleagues, um, about something called H B twenty. This bill was introduced quite a while ago at the State House, but, um, hasn't really gone anywhere nor have we ever really brought it up in our legislative report. And I kinda thought it was pretty important pertaining to what we do here as a local board and a local school district. This bill exempts from the prohibition against carrying a handgun in a school safety zone by a concealed handgun licensee. So in other words, this bill, if passed, and we don't really know, quite know where it is at this moment in time, would permit folks who have a concealed carry permit to carry their guns and/or weapons into or onto school property and in school safety zones. And like I said, I bring this to your attention because should it ever pass in the State House, this would directly affect not only our school district, but all school districts and all counties across Ohio. Um, there are nine total state representatives who have sponsored this legislation. One from Butler County, one from our very own district here in Hamilton County. Um, should this ever move further into a discussion at the State House, I would suggest all local school boards across Hamilton and Butler County speak up on their position on this bill. So if you'd like a copy of this or the, um, the little write-up that they do to give you an analysis and kinda the summary of the bill, because the bills are quite difficult to read, um, in their entirety, especially if it's a long one, which this one's not too bad, it's only about five pages. But if you'd like a copy, let me know and I can copy this for you tonight. And that is all I had to bring to light this evening. We don't have any board motions, so we'll move right into board comments. Uh, Mrs. Kuhn, we'll start from you, any comments from you madam?
Um, well, uh, the superintendent brought up a few things that I just wanted to highlight to our, our viewers and our visitors here is, uh, the many things that go on, um, in our school district. And I wanted to highlight the preschool, the visit to the preschool, that's really important. I think it's one of the focuses our district's working towards to provide a strong foundation for our district. So preschool's huge, so if any parents out there are looking and shopping for preschool, take the time to come to that open house, uh, in April. The Cinderella play, which is next month, wanted to make sure everybody knew to come and see that, that's a great opportunity. And I wanted to invite our public to know all the wonderful things we have going on. Our students do, they need your support. Um, it's a great way for the community to come in and see what's going on and to understand what, what your district is doing to enrich our community and our children, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Kuhn, Mr. Birdy?
Uh, I had the pleasure of, uh, spending some time with Mr. Smith on Friday and going to some of the schools and meeting some of the administration and doing some tours of the schools as well. We're not done yet, so we're gonna have to schedule some additional time to, to see some of the other schools. But, uh, I can just say it wa- it was a great experience to get to meet some of the administrators at the schools as well as, uh, see the actual facilities up close and, and personal, so. Looking forward to finishing that tour.
Thank you, Mr. Birdy, Mrs. Ruggles.
I too had an opportunity along with, um, Mrs. Kuhn and, um, to accompany Mr. Smith on, um, the tours. And that was very helpful, very good opportunity, um, to be introduced as new school board members and see where we're going. It's one thing to sit here and get the information, it's another thing to see it in action, so that was good. Um, and, you know, I still, li- is this the point where I talk about the liaison for the community? Pardon?
If, whatever you'd like.
Alright, just wanted to make sure. Um, so I am the liaison for Springfield Township and I have had an opportunity to meet with, um, trustee, Wen McFarland. So we just had, um, a conversation on how, what opportunities, um, are, exist for us to be able to connect Springfield Township with the school district. Um, when great things are happening within, um, the school district, you know, how do we salute the students who reside in Springfield Township and make sure that they're recognized? Um, and so I'll be reaching out to Mr. Smith to understand what's already in place and where we can build upon, um, those efforts to have a stronger presence in Springfield Township and make sure that that community is in the know. Um, and that's it, that's all that I have.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Ruggles, Dr. Johnson?
Um, thank you, Madam President, um, just two things. Um, we didn't have our student achievement meeting this pa- this month in lieu of the New Tech Digital, uh, Technology Display that the students did. And I, I mean, I've never seen a more excited group of students to get, to show a book report because they were showing it in a different way, it was hands-on. And, um, it was really amazing, uh, with the robotics and how the students, I mean, they were learning to do things with, um, you know, with the laser and people were, you know, the students were taking computers apart. This is part of what New Tech does and the students were presenting individually. So they were talking basically to strangers and presenting and that, uh, is what's going to help move the district, uh, forward. Uh, because those are the things that, uh, we're doing that's going to be different, things that we've never done before. And so, um, New Tech is being rolled out across all of the ages and all the grade levels. So for those people who were waiting to see how it was gonna happen, um, myself, one of them, uh, wanted to see how it was gonna happen. Mr. Smith said, "We're bringing project-based learning," and I said, "Show me." And he, he is, he, the New Tech. And, um, those kids were so excited, I was just, it was just amazed to see. And, um, I just wanna commend, uh, Dr. Holden and, um, and, uh, Mrs. Denny for how they have disseminated the information. It is on the website, they, they give us regular updates, not just the Board, but to the community. But if you haven't read anything about it, go out and check the website. There are, um, podcasts out there, there's all kinds of information out there for what's really about to happen. The other thing that I wanted to mention is the summer enrichment that is going, uh, to happen in between June the first and July the twenty-second for grades four through ten. And we wanna make sure that if you're, um, you feel like your student needs that summer enrichment, that you get in contact with, uh, their teacher or their principal and, you know, get their name, uh, on that list so that, uh, you know, they can get the academic help that they need over the summer, so. That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Uh, for my comments, I just wanted to congratulate you again Superintendent Smith, as well as all of our wonderful teachers we honored earlier on another successful fine arts fair. Especially the petting zoo. I saw that on the, um, itinerary and said, I got excited internally because my children love petting animals. And then I got there into the library and realized it was instruments, so it was a petting zoo for instruments. And I'm telling you, my children, both of my girls tried every single instrument there and the room was packed the whole day. So it was just fantastic. And our older students were teaching the younger students how to hold, how to play, getting those younger students interested in playing an instrument, which is very, very cool. I never had anything like that in my schooling, it was either you joined the band or you didn't. So this is a great inspiration. Um, and wanted also congratulate you and Dr. Holden on the straight A fund, um, for a very well-written grant. She deserves kudos for that. Um, and I also wanted to make one more point that I neglected to make on my legislative report that, you know, this may not seem like a big deal to some folks. And I believe, you know, proponents of that specific bill regarding the concealed carry would argue that, you know, if, it's a good idea if that person who was carrying the concealed weapon were in the right place at the right time with all the school shootings going on. But the odds of something like that happening where someone with a concealed carry weapon is in a school building before a school shooting was getting ready to happen and God forbid, the negativity and the negative situations that could come out of a situation like that, just, I think bears some thinking on our part as Board and administrators of local school districts. So like I said, I'll keep you posted if that goes anywhere. Hasn't gone anywhere in a while, so I don't know quite where it stands. That's in my comments, Mr. Superintendent, would you like to add anything?
Yes, finally, uh, in light, in, in alignment of what you mentioned about, uh, the concealed carry, there was something that happened earlier today where a student from another district made calls about, um, some unrest that would happen in, in buildings across the, uh, the Hamilton County. Uh, they did not mention Wynton Woods, but, uh, because we have a good connection with people in the city, uh, we received a call early enough where we didn't have to do any evacuation about, um, how the process was handled and the student is receiving, um, probably some special care because there are some special circumstances. When you make that kinda call about what's gonna happen in buildings and it's not very positive, it's not just about punitive measures for that student, it's about, there's something missing and how do we figure it out to help you through it? So, uh, our district is safe, our administrators were on alert and, um, thank you guys for, uh, supporting the work that we do.
Thank you Superintendent Smith, anything from you, Mr. Seymour?
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, do we have any representation from the teachers' union this evening? I don't see anyone. Um, how about representation from Oopsie, did you wanna speak tonight?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Uh, Board, there's no need for an executive session this evening, so I'd like to thank you all for sticking with us and your attendance tonight. Have a fun and safe spring break, meeting adjourned.
Did anyone want to see this?
Um, yeah, I did my clock.
Yeah, that clock.